Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the City Club of Portland, Portland's own citizens forum. My name is Susan Hammer, and I'm president of the City Club. Before we begin, I'd like to remind you to turn off your cellphones and other things that beep and sing and ring and make noises. A few announcements before we begin our program. Our program for next Friday, our Friday forum, will be on the parental notification for minors seeking abortion ballot measure. And those people discussing it will be Dr. Elizabeth Newhall, who's an opponent, Grace Powers, who is a supporter of the measure, and Melody Rose, who is from the City Club Program Committee and will provide an overview. It will be moderated by Nick Fish. We have some upcoming events that I want you to know about. Our Citizens Read, our monthly book group, is going to be held on Monday, September 25th, at City Club Commons. And the book that we're reading this month is Michael Pollan's book, An Omnivore's Dilemma. Purchases of the books are as available at the check-in table, where 10% of the proceeds will go to the City Club of Portland. The Citizens Read is open to the public, but we would ask that you call City Club and RSVP. Now, you are all invited to a little party, and this will be next Friday. At City Club, we have final Friday parties from 4:30 to 6:00 on the last Friday of each month. It'll be at the City Club Commons. And this is a perfect place to talk to other City Club members, learn more about City Club, and view the current art exhibit. This is open to both members and non-members alike, and reservations are not required. So I hope you'll come. Now, details about this and other upcoming events can be found in your bulletin or on the City Club website at www.pdxcityclub.org. And while you're on the website, you can find out more information about our TV and radio broadcast schedule and our citizens blog, the online forum. We have one new member here today, and I would like to introduce her and ask you to all help me welcome her to City Club. Her name is Felissa Haggins. Felissa, could you please stand? Welcome to City Club. And this is the final week of the two quarterly sponsors who have been with us for some time. And again, I want to thank these two quarterly sponsors for being such great corporate citizens and ask you to join me in thanking Kaiser Permanente and Stoll Reeves LLP. Our program today, as you know, is a debate for Multnomah County Commissioner, District Two, and it will involve Jeff Cogan and Lou Frederick. This debate has several sections. First, each candidate will give a three-minute opening statement, a coin toss determine the order of appearance in this debate. Our timekeeper today is Leslie Moorhead, who's seated right here in front. Following the opening statements, candidates will respond to questions suggested in advance of this meeting by City Club members. A subcommittee of the City Club's Program Committee composed the final set of questions. These are the only questions that will be asked today, and there will be no questions from the floor. We will rely upon the judgment of our distinguished panel of City Club members seated here to my right to decide whether or not the questions have indeed been answered by the candidates. If two or more of these members raise their cards indicating that they feel a question has not been answered, I will restate the question, and the candidate will again reply. On our panel, we have Andy Linehan, David Mandell, and Don Williams. Following the City Club questions, each candidate will have the opportunity to ask two questions to the other. Following the rotation of candidate questions, each candidate will make a three-minute closing statement. Please be respectful of the candidates, and please hold all applause until the end of the program. So I'd like to first introduce Jeff Cogan. Jeff Cogan is currently the chief of staff for City Club Commissioner Dan Salzman, where he focuses primarily on youth. Is that wrong?
City Commissioner.
Okay, City Commissioner. Oh, I get it. Okay. All right. These habits. Okay. City Commissioner Dan Salzman, where he focuses primarily on youth and sustainability issues. Since moving to Portland from Florida in 1992, Jeff has owned his own business and worked in both nonprofits and government. In addition to his experience with Commissioner Salzman's office, Jeff previously served as the Communications Director for the Multnomah County, or Multnomah Commission on Children and Families, and was the board president for the nonprofit volunteer group Hands-on Portland. Jeff founded the Portland Pretzel Company, which was the first certified organic bakery in Portland. The other person I'd like to introduce is Lou Frederick. Lou graduated, Lou is currently a PhD candidate in the School of Urban Affairs at Portland State University. He was a Bush Night Science Fellow at the Massachusetts Institute of Technology. Lou was a TV and radio reporter in Portland for 17 years, and he served as Director of Public Information for the Portland Public Schools. He now sits on the Board of the Oregon Shakespeare Festival, OSU College of Science Board of Visitors, Oregon Public Broadcasting Citizens Advisory Board, and the Oregon Bus Project. So we'll begin with a three-minute opening statement by Mr. Cogan, and followed by an opening statement by Mr. Frederick.
Thank you, Susan. I'm excited to be here at City Club, which has helped to find civic engagement in Portland for decades. I want to begin by telling you a little bit about myself. My wife Lisa and I moved here 14 years ago because we thought it would be a good place to raise a family, which it is, and because this community has a history of coming together around challenges with solutions that are rooted in local progressive values. I've been fighting for progressive values my entire life. Our community is filled with people who share these values, including my opponent. But when it comes to choosing our leadership, we need to ask more than simply how long someone has lived in this community, or whether they share our values. We need to ask whether they can translate these values into accomplishments that make a real difference for our community. I'm proud to say that I have a track record of doing just that. When Lisa and I moved here, we started a small business, Portland Pretzel Company. We were the first organic bakery in Portland, and when we grew big enough to hire employees, we offered them healthcare coverage, which wasn't easy, but we knew it was the right thing to do. As Commissioner Salzman's chief of staff, I helped lead the fight against the Bush administration's so-called USA Patriot Act, because those aren't our values. And I've helped lead the effort to make this the first city in the country to get all of its electricity from renewable wind energy, because those are our values. I helped lead the creation of the Children's Investment Fund, which provides 10,000 Portland children with early childhood programs like Head Start and after-school support like Self Enhancement, Inc., and SUN Schools. And best of all, 95% of the money goes directly to help the kids, because we've limited overhead to 5%. I helped build the wonderful nonprofit Hands-on Portland, which has engaged a whole new generation in community service. When the organization's future was in doubt, the board asked me to step in, and I led the turnaround that saved it. Last year, 13,000 people volunteered in this community with Hands-on Portland projects. Now, we've all seen the bumper stickers which say, "Keep Portland Weird." Well, I don't know about weird, but we have a special place here, and we need to keep Portland Portland. We need to admit to ourselves that the cavalry is not on the way. We can't wait for Washington DC or Salem to save us. Our fate is in our own hands, and our community needs to come together to re-energize the fight to maintain our quality of life and to confront the new challenges that we face, like ensuring all our citizens have access to high-quality healthcare. Getting there requires strong leadership and a clear vision. It requires remembering that government is us and not them, and it requires someone who understands how to get things done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Frederick. Remember, please, to hold your applause until the end of the debates. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I appreciate the chance to be with you and to talk with you today. Most of you know me. I am a past member of the City Club Board, and I served on several committees of this club. I care about public policy because I care about what it can do for the human beings it touches. I've seen it harm, and I've seen it help. I see the enormous potential for it to make us stronger together, and that's what got me into this race, and that's what keeps me going. Oh, I'm also interested in the budget numbers and how they add up, but more importantly, what the assumptions are in order to make those numbers add up. But behind it all, I expect an answer to this basic question: How does this make life better? My jobs and my interests have been to study and chronicle the last 30 years in this city. I did that as a reporter for Channel 8 and as a communication officer for one of the three biggest public agencies in the region. I raised a son and a daughter in my northeast Portland neighborhood, and in the process, I forged a lot of connections with people, and we all love this beautiful city. I want to use the short time I have allotted here to talk about what some of that history means to me, especially in north and northeast Portland. How many of you here know what urban renewal means to people with roots in the Elliott Neighborhood? How many in this number, in this room, understand the sense in some neighborhoods that they are left out of the economy, most especially when improvements are made? How many who read recently about the PDC knew that those complaints were generations old? This is just one illustration of the need for perspective when decisions are made. When decisions are made, the company, the community, needs to be in the room, not because there was an outreach effort or an advisory committee, but because a member of the board brings that depth to the table. There's simply no shortcut for that. People tried for decades to get loans to improve their homes and their businesses on Mississippi Avenue. Now, all of a sudden, the money seems to be there, but the people are different. The same thing has happened at Martin Luther King Boulevard, on Alberta, and Denver, and I could go on with the list. Will anybody be there to question when it happens in Lentz, or St. John's, or Park Rose, or Rockwood, or Gresham? I am simply not willing to accept a mediocre community. For too long, we've been seduced into false choices by those who in fact want us to do less and less with the public commons, who persuade us to accept mediocrity because we can't have excellence on the cheap. Now, I didn't do a survey, a push-pull, or a focus group before deciding to run. I participated in my community for over 30 years. I bring life experience, a deep appreciation for the history, hopes, and aspirations of my community, and a deep sense of responsibility to honor the generations who've come before and to make this world better for those who come after. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move to the portion of the program where I will ask the questions prepared in advance by City Club members. The candidate to whom the question is directed will have 60 seconds to respond to the question. Following each answer, the opposing candidate will have the option of a 45-second rebuttal. The candidates have not seen these questions in advance. The first question goes to Mr. Frederick. Mr. Frederick, what would you do to get Wapato Jail open?
Wapato Jail should not be open until we are actually doing the right thing with the jails that we have now. And right now, we are in the process, we have a number of major deficiencies in the programs and in the jails we have right now. So I will not open Wapato until we are convinced that we're actually doing the right things in the jails like Inverness that I toured recently, or the jails or downtown. We have programs that we have diminished and cut in the most recent past that are simply needed, and we cannot afford to do something else, to open a new facility, before we get those things done.
Thank you. Rebuttal?
Lou and I disagree about this. We went to the voters in this community and asked them to raise their taxes, and they spent $60 million building this new jail. It's been sitting empty for three years. We spend $500,000 a year having it sit empty, and all the while, we have a jail bed shortage, and there are whole classes of crimes that you literally can't go to jail for in this community. I think in order to have a public safety system, there needs to be consequences for crimes, but it's also the case that we need to, if we want to restore the credibility of government in this community, do what we told the people we were going to do. Now, I've led the effort to begin talking with Clark County about sharing those costs with us, and I think that's important. And it's also the case that public safety requires more than just jails, but we need to start by doing what we said we would do.
Thank you. Mr. Cogan, the next question is for you. According to the preliminary findings of a district attorney's investigation, the Multnomah County Sheriff's Office spends far more money on jail beds, healthcare, and incarcerating state and federal prisoners than its counterparts around the northwest. What steps do you intend to take to address that disparity?
I think that's a very important question. I think it's, we have to look into what the nature of that discrepancy is. There are certain things that just cost more in this community, but we need to look and make sure, if there are savings there that can be had while maintaining the quality of our public safety system, we need to do it. Now, one piece of that, where the state is not paying us what it costs us to house state prisoners, which we're operating for them under Senate Bill 1145, we subsidized the state $6 million last year. I think we need to change that relationship. We are currently operating under a contract with the state, and they simply don't reimburse us for what it costs. What I think we need to do in the very next session is say to the state, "Listen, we're happy to house these prisoners, but you need to pay us what it costs us to do it. And if they don't, we need to walk away from that contract, take that $6 million, and use it for other things that we have needs for."
Thank you. Rebuttal?
Would you repeat the question again for me?
Yeah. The question is, according to the preliminary findings of a district attorney's investigation, the Multnomah County Sheriff's Office spends far more money on jail beds, healthcare, and incarcerating state and federal prisoners than its counterparts around the northwest. What steps do you intend to take to address that disparity?
Let's take a quick look at exactly who is going into the jails. As I said, I recently toured the Inverness jail and discovered that 80% of the folks there are there because of addiction and mental health issues. We also have problems in terms of health, the healthcare and nursing within the jail as well. And we are in fact releasing prisoners right now who are suffering from a skin disease that is an antibiotic-resistant skin disease, because we do not have enough nurses and medical staff to actually treat those folks. We need to take a good, close look at what we are accomplishing within that jail, and then begin to address those numbers directly. Okay? Question, question, question.
Question marks. Question marks have gone up, which means that...
What? Go ahead.
If, you need to, you have 30 seconds to restate your rebuttal.
Well, I will simply add to it, because in fact, I think we are dealing with a situation where the jails are, Jeff has mentioned the need for the state to in fact pay for the services that it's requiring us to pay for, but we need to do something more than that. We need to understand what services are required within the jail and address them effectively. That's how I approach that.
Thank you. Mr. Frederick, the legislature reconvenes next January. Specifically, what should the commission be asking the 2007 legislature to do for Multnomah County? And what role would you personally play in advancing the county's legislative agenda?
I think that the county should be asking the legislature to be part, to understand that the services that are required in our county are in fact things that are required statewide, and that we are part of the state. It is not a matter of just simply asking for the amount of money that we send to Salem to come back to Portland, because we are part of the whole state. So we need to be in fact asking the state to be very clear about any requirements that the state has put upon Multnomah County, and that the state in fact find a way to have a revenue source to pay for those requirements.
Thank you. Rebuttal?
We need to ask the state to treat this community fairly. Right now, every dollar in taxes that Multnomah County residents send down to Salem is matched with 70 cents that comes back to provide services here. One of the reasons that happens is because they create a statewide system of compensation. The jails is a perfect example of this, where they pay the same amount for the services, whether they're delivered in Multnomah County or Douglas County. Simply put, it's more expensive to do things here, and it's not fair that Salem does not compensate us for that. And we need to change that. This community can no longer continue to subsidize Salem.
Thank you. The next question is for Mr. Cogan. Mr. Cogan, the array of services provided by the county has substantially diminished from when its charter was originally written. Given that most counties have three commissioners compared with five in Multnomah County, how do the on-the-job demands here justify having four full-time commissioners and one full-time county executive? You have one minute.
It's true that things have changed, but it's not the case that things have become less complex. Multnomah County as a community faces a whole range of problems, including things like providing healthcare to our citizens, dealing with mental illness, confronting homelessness, public safety. These are not simple, but it doesn't take quantity, actually, more than anything, it takes quality. What we need is a Multnomah County commission that can deal with these problems. But my point is, the mere fact that things have changed in 80 years doesn't make this easier. It's clearly been the case, anyone who's been tracking Multnomah County's government over the course of the last few years, that we haven't been addressing the problems that really matter to this community. I think the most important question is, who is in those leadership positions rather than how many there are? But nothing makes me think that we could do better with one than four. It's a question of who.
Thank you. Mr. Frederick, 45-minute rebuttal, 45-second?
Really? Thank you. I appreciate that. I won't take that 45.
All right. How about 45 seconds?
Thank you. I think that it is clear that there is enough, there is clearly enough to do with the complexity of the county, as well as frankly, the different people within the county, that we need to have a personal connection. People need to have a personal connection with their county government. That is something that I think I bring a lot stronger in many, many ways. I think it's going to be important for people to be out there, talking with folks, getting the ideas, and being concerned about the ideas that are out there in the grocery stores as you're walking around. I can go into any grocery store in north and northeast Portland, and I'm going to know three people, because they're going to come up to me and ask me about concerns that they have. I enjoy doing that, and I think that's important for the county to have that kind of access for the public.
Thank you. Next question is for Mr. Frederick. Last year's budget attempted to use performance-based and outcome-based budgeting. Chair Lynn called it priority budgeting. Would you hope to continue in that direction or use a different form of budgeting? Please explain in 60 seconds.
You made that clear that time, didn't you? I think that it is important to use that particular approach, but I want to add something to it. I think it's going to be even more important to be able to know what the community is talking about, not by way of the, of just simply a survey, or a report, or a meeting, a hearing. It is important to be out in the community constantly, talking with folks, letting them know that you're there, and hearing from them about how, about what their needs are as those needs change. An example I think that I can give is that there was a concern about the gang task force group that was out on the streets. We had problems this whole summer, because we had literally mobs of kids showing up, and we didn't know about them, because we didn't have gang task force people on the street. Those kinds of issues, those kinds of things you don't find out about, if you find out about them later, we could have had some major problems. We were lucky we didn't, but these are the kinds of issues that I think we should be dealing with.
Thank you. 45-second rebuttal?
When you have a situation, which we, for better or for worse, have, which is that the needs of our community far outweigh the resources that are available, I think it's the right thing to do to try and create a budget process that funds things based on priorities. So I like the idea of a priority-based funding decision. Having said that, the priorities that the county board chose in the funding package this last year don't necessarily reflect the ones that I would have chosen. There was decisions made to pay off debt early on a bridge while cutting important social programs like SUN Schools. So I think the key isn't whether we should have a priority-based system, it's do we choose the right priorities to fund?
Thank you. Mr. Cogan, the next question is for you. The Multnomah County Library is one of the most heavily-used libraries in the country, and the library is one of the most popular services the county offers. In spite of this, funding for the library is inherently unstable, because it is funded through a library levy and because of decreasing general fund support. Is this the best way to fund our library system, and should we consider a different model?
That's a great question. Our libraries are extremely important to the quality of life in this community. I go with my kids to the Hollywood Branch Library all the time, and it makes a really big difference in our lives. Having said that, it's not well-known, but more than half of the library's budget is based on these five-year serial levies. It's incredibly unreliable and unstable, and we always have to be in a position every five years of just hoping that it passes again, so our library system doesn't get demolished. In most parts of the countries, library systems have a separate funding base, what would be a library district that can independently assess levies for the library. That's what we need to do in this community. We can't continuously go every five years and hope for the best. We need to put the library system on a stable, secure, long-term funding place.
Thank you. Mr. Frederick?
You know, I think we're going to disagree on this, Jeff, which is odd for us, in some ways. I happen to think that it is really important for us to regularly be asking people how they feel about the library, how, because what we find is that people love the library system in Portland and in Multnomah County. It is great. It is an excellent system. And I, it is also the, probably the largest after-school service in the county, with more people going to the, more kids going to the library after school than you can find in any other place. It is important for us to have that personal connection with something that we're funding. And this is what, this is how I appreciate the kind of effort that goes into the levy, because it means that we are in fact saying, "This is what we do."
Thank you. Next question is for Mr. Frederick. Having a county government might make sense in rural areas or to supplement the services provided by small cities, but does it really make sense to have both a big-city government and a county government? Wouldn't it be more efficient and save money if we eliminated the county government in Portland, had the city take over those services, and only had a county government to serve the areas not within the city limits of Portland?
No, it would not make more sense to do that, in my view. I think it would be, it is, it is a very, the county, in fact, I think it was Steve Dean put it, that the county deals with the needy and the naughty. It is a, it is a reality that the county government is dealing with human services, direct human services. And I think that the community needs to know that that is a particular expertise that the county has rather than the city. And I would appreciate, and in fact, I think it's important to coordinate those two and not duplicate, but it is not necessarily something that we should have, we should have the cities take over what the county is doing. There are things at the counties that the city should be taking over, and there are things that the region should be taking over. For instance, the bridges. It is going to be important, because the region uses the bridges, not just the county. And many times, the county, the county road, the county thing is just the bridge. The roads leading up to the bridge are our city, our state. It's going to be important for us to do something different there. Thanks.
Thank you. 45 seconds, Mr. Cogan.
I think the idea of city-county consolidation provides a lot of fun conversations and interesting policy analysis, but it's frankly not going to happen. This is something this community has studied and attempted a number of times over the last 20 years, and I just don't think it's going to happen in the near future. Having said that, I think there is an awful lot of room for improving the relationship between the county and the cities that operate within the county to deliver services more efficiently. For example, the sheriff's office now does patrol duties from their east county headquarters on Sauvignon Island. They spend an hour driving through the city of Portland to get there. It would make an awful lot more sense to contract with the city of Portland to do that kind of thing. I think there's a lot of opportunities like that.
Thank you. Next question. Thank you. Next question is for Mr. Cogan. Over the past few years, Multnomah County has struggled with economic development and job growth. What is the county's role in economic development?
The county has as its mission, among other things, helping people in poverty. There is no way that we can help people in poverty better than to try and help grow a strong economy. Literally in terms of programs, the county doesn't do an awful lot in that regard. There's the strategic investment program that helps with some high-tech facilities out in the east part of the county, but the county has not viewed economic development as part of its mission, and that needs to change. The county needs to work in partnership with the city, with the state, with the private organizations that are fostering economic development, and try to improve our business climate, because frankly, it hasn't been where it needs to be. And there are things the county does, both through regulation, both through its taxation policy, and just through the way it interacts on a daily basis with the community that can make a real difference in how our economy grows.
Thank you. Mr. Frederick, rebuttal?
The economic development is an interesting issue. I would consider it economic opportunity. Economic development has, in the past, often meant just simply bringing in a large business, and not working with the small businesses in the community. It is time for us to really look at the small businesses. For example, we know that we have large public projects that are coming up, the bridge across the Columbia. That project, and we also have a model for how to deal with it. Trimed has decided to break up its contracts, its large contracts, into smaller bite-sized pieces so that small companies who are doing hauling, flagging, or putting up fences can actually have the chance to do that, to have a piece of that contract. That's the kind of economic development we really need to have.
Thank you. Next question is for Mr. Frederick. On your website, you say, "We, quote, 'need to make medical care available and accessible to everyone.'" You acknowledge that the county, quote, "may not be able to fix the whole problem." What portion of the problem do you think the county can fix? How and with what money?
Here's a classic example for me. We have been trying to do this as a very large piece. Here's a small piece. We know, for example, that one of the reasons that a lot of the new medical professionals coming out of OHSU leave the area is because of high malpractice insurance costs. If the county could help get together a pool that would target specific audiences, specific populations in the county, 18 to 34, Latino families, other groups, if we can get that kind of malpractice insurance for those folks as a pool, lower the cost for malpractice insurance for those people, and ask them to stay in the county, that is one proposal that I would look at. But we need to do it in bite-sized pieces. We need to have universal health care. Let's just be real clear about that. That's how I view it. We do not have it, but we need to start the effort to do it in bite-sized pieces. And I'm also very heavily involved, as much as I can be, in the Archimedes Project that John Kitasob has been involved with.
Thank you. Mr. Cogan?
I think there's a lot more the county could be doing, and we can look at some of the things the county's been doing well and build upon them. My favorite example of what the county does right now are the school-based health clinics that the county has in about a dozen schools throughout the community. These offer extremely cost-effective ways of bringing health care to children, because they rely on nurse practitioners and community partnerships. I think we need to expand the school-based health centers in partnership with community partners like the hospitals, because this will keep people out of the emergency rooms, to provide access to all children in this community for health care. And once we do that, I think by showing people that we can make a real difference on this problem, we can begin to look broader to more universal approaches.
Thank you. Next question is for Mr. Cogan. You propose to turn parole and probation over to the state. Isn't this the county's community corrections program, excuse me, isn't the county's community corrections program highly regarded in public safety circles? And do you really think that the streets would be safer if we turned that program over to the state?
The county has a very good community corrections program. Right now, it operates that program under contract with the state. Unfortunately, this is one of the examples I was talking about before, where we get a contract from the state that frankly is a raw deal. It's hard to get straight numbers, but the estimates are that we at Multnomah County subsidize the state in providing these services somewhere between $15 and $20 million a year. My preference is not to turn it over to the state. My preference is to go to the state and say, yes, we would like to continue providing these services, and we do a very good job of that. All we want is for you to pay us what it costs to do this. And one thing I will say is that if they won't do that, I've yet to have anyone show me that we're getting $15 to $20 million worth of extra value by taking these contracts over. There have been two other counties in the state, Lynn County and Douglas County, that got fed up with this compensation method, turned the system over to the state. The same employees are providing the same services. They're being paid by the state, freeing up money for the county.
Thank you. Mr. Frederick?
It is going to be important for us to challenge the state regularly on the required, the requirements that they bring about. But in fact, the probation thing, the probation system in the county is working. It needs additional support, and we need to find some way to bring that additional support in. And if that is by way of talking with the state and the legislators and others within the county, that's something that I want to make sure that we do. We do not have, we know that some of the probation things that are successful, in fact, provide us a safer community, provide us people who are able to do better work within the community, who integrate into the community. In fact, we need to expand that, because we have people coming out of the prisons and the jails who are not able to provide for themselves or their families.
Thank you. During the next portion of the program, each candidate will ask three questions of the other. Questions must be asked in 30 seconds. The opposing candidate will have one minute to respond, after which the questioner will have the option of a 30-second rebuttal. We will alternate between the candidates and begin with Jeff Cogan. Mr. Cogan, your first question for Mr. Frederick. Please state it in 30 seconds.
Lou, you've said that one of your top priorities is to improve economic self-reliance for our community. Can you name and discuss two specific examples of what you've done personally to make a difference on this issue? And what specifically do you propose that Multnomah County do to improve the situation?
I can think of several, but I will, in fact, talk about two. One is that, in my job, one of my previous jobs was also working for Portland Community College, and getting the information out to the community about some of the most incredible programs that we have at the Cascade Campus, that provide for, potential for jobs that are presently unknown by most of the community, in jobs in HVAC, and multimedia, and creative services. I was able to get that information out and get people connected with one another so that those new students could come in and get things together. The second approach that I was able to involve with is much older, and it involved me talking with students and getting them involved with the community, with business groups throughout the city, especially in my role in Portland Community and Portland Public Schools. We were able to get a number of groups and businesses to be connected with the students as well.
Thank you. Mr. Cogan?
Oh, wait, we've got...
The last part of the question. The last part of the question. I'm sorry. What was the last part of the question?
Last part was, what do you propose that Multnomah County do to improve the situation?
Okay, you have 30 seconds to amend your answer.
Well, what I would propose that Multnomah County, in fact, be aggressive about making sure that the community understands that the clusters of, the economic clusters, the engines that are going to be driving this community include things like biotechnology, nanotechnology, and creative services. And in fact, we expect at least a $2 billion per year industry coming out of the north waterfront park blocks, but most of the folks and many of the people in Multnomah County do not know about that. Publicizing it is a key element.
Thank you. Mr. Cogan, 30 seconds?
I'd say that there are two things I've been involved in which the county could take the lead from. One, a community partnership called the Business Outreach Program, which paired Portland State students with emerging businesses in north and northeast Portland. It's created 450 jobs in the last nine years, for one-third the cost of federal workforce programs. Second, at the city, we reined in payday lenders. Now title lenders are out there. Multnomah County needs to take the lead in doing that. They prey on poor people. That's a big problem in terms of the economic opportunity in this community.
Thank you. Mr. Frederick, your first question of Mr. Cogan. Please state it in 30 seconds.
Thank you. Jeff, one of the biggest issues that we run into in the county deals with mental health. What sort of proposals do you have in dealing with mental health and providing the care for the most vulnerable in the community?
Thank you. Mental health is an extremely challenging problem. One of the big problems we have with mental health is it's so stigmatized. People are afraid to admit that they have it. People don't talk about mental illnesses. And I think the county is perpetuating that by having a mental health division that's separate from the Health Department. One thing the county ought to do is recognize that mental illness is a health problem, and mental health should be dealt with in the Health Department. And there's two other advantages to that. One, unlike the mental health division at the county, the Health Department has been extremely well-run over the course of the last five years. And two, the Health Department has something called federally qualified health center status, which means that if you run bills through there, you have the opportunity to leverage additional federal money into this community. So I think that's what we ought to be doing.
Okay. Mr. Frederick, 30 seconds?
The recent state law on parity with mental health is going to create some significant pressure on the county. It is important, I believe, for us to go to the state and say, we know that this is coming up. We need your support. We need your help from there. We need to make it clear, again, how important this particular issue is, because it does address many, many people, and especially it addresses our prison system, our jail system as well. I recently toured a program that treats children as young as four years old. Sorry for that.
Okay. Mr. Cogan, your next question for Mr. Frederick?
Lou, for more than 10 years, you worked at upper levels of Portland Public School District's administration. During that time, the achievement gap between minority and white students grew worse, and many primarily African-American schools like Jefferson High School have teetered on collapse. What specific actions did you take to improve the situation while at the district? And what specific plans do you have for Multnomah County to help address it?
Jeff, I'm not sure where you're getting your figures, because in fact, the achievement gaps did not grow worse between white, African-American and white students. It did, in fact, it did, there were some, a number of schools that improved a great deal. My personal involvement was too long to try to explain in this short period of time, but I spent a great deal of time trying to leverage efforts to get information and resources to the schools and the programs it needed, as well as getting parents and teachers involved and the community involved in dealing with the issues of achievement throughout the Portland schools. It is one of the most difficult struggles that I've had to deal with. I feel good about some of the things that I managed to get done, but many of the things that I worked on, I could not work on alone, and I did manage to get some things accomplished. And I was rather pleased with many of the things that I did get accomplished.
Mr. Cogan, 45 seconds?
I think the achievement gap, whether it's improved or gotten slightly worse, is absolutely unacceptable, and I've been working on improving that myself. By passing the Children's Investment Fund, we provide resources for early childhood programs that have helped bring people to school ready to learn. And we've funded after-school and mentoring programs such as sun schools, which make a real difference in kids' lives and improve their academic performance. And finally, we've funded child abuse programs, because it's well-known that kids who are in an abusive situation can't perform well at school, so we've taken concrete actions.
Thank you. Mr. Frederick, your next question for Mr. Cogan?
Jeff, you have spent some significant time at the city, and you've spent some time at the county as well. But many of the problems that we're dealing with in the Multnomah County are not just city or county problems. They are, in fact, state problems. Can you give us a sense of your interaction, your knowledge of the issues at the state level?
I think it's true that many of our funding problems originated at the state. It was when Measure Five passed that school funding changed in this community from being 75% local to being 75% from Salem. And not coincidentally, that's when our local schools began to have significant problems educating our kids and having the resources to do that. What I know generally about the relationship between Salem and this community is that Salem has been failing this community, that local leadership needs to pull together, that we cannot continue to accept the fact that Salem is not giving us the resources that we need to address our problems. I'm familiar with the people who are in the legislature in our local delegation. I think I can work with them. I've met the various, I know the governor, I know those folks. I know that there is the capacity there to change the situation. What there hasn't been is the political will.
Okay, we've got question marks. Would you like him to restate the question?
Yeah, would you restate the question?
I said basically that you have, you've had experience with the city and with the county, but what kinds of, but there are problems that are much broader than the city and county, and they are state problems. How, what, give us a sense of the kind of impact or the kind of knowledge you have of the state?
Well, I've driven all around the state. I know people all across the state. I'm actually, I'm kind of, I'm not sure I really understand what you mean by that. I have an understanding of the role of the state government as opposed to the role of the city and the county government. And I recognize frankly that many of our problems stem not from the city government, not from the state government, but are actually a result of federal government problems. The federal government has not been funding things in this community. I understand how state government is set up. We've got a governor, a secretary of state. I'm not sure what else you want.
Okay. Mr. Frederick, rebuttal?
The point here is that I have also traveled around the state. I've been to all 36 counties. I know the people who are within the state. The solutions do not come just by way of Salem. They have to come by a knowledge of the people who are in Burns, in Coos Bay, in Jackson County, in Umatilla County, and understand those, the issues that are particularly surrounding those counties, and how we have related in Multnomah County to those counties. Working together with those people is going to be important.
Thank you. We now move to that final portion of the program, three-minute closing statements from each candidate. We will begin with Mr. Cogan.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the City Club for hosting this debate, as well as Lou for a spirited and enlightening discussion. I'd like to thank the many people who've supported me in this campaign, because they know that actions speak louder than words. Mayor Tom Potter, community leaders Joanne Bowman and Willie Brown, the Sierra Club, Stand for Children, the Oregon League of Conservation Voters, the organizations representing the working people of Multnomah County, and more than 1,000 of our neighbors. I'm especially grateful to my friends and mentors, Dan Saltzman and Bev Stein, who more than anyone have shown me that through hard work and perseverance, local government can make wonderful things happen in this community. I'd also like to acknowledge my family, my wife Lisa, my brother Mitch, my sister-in-law Arlene, my brother-in-law Sam, and my cousin Jonathan, who are here today, my children Johanna and Alex, who are working away at Alameda Elementary School, and my parents Helene and Steve, who are listening in via the miracle of the internet in Florida, which if you know my parents, is a true miracle. They've put up with a lot. They've pitched in even more, and there's simply no way I could have done this without them. Today, we've heard a lot about the challenges and opportunities we face. Multnomah County is not a high-profile government, at least not when things are working well, but it's essential to this community's well-being. We've discussed our shared values, and we've heard why sharing values is important, but it's not enough. What we need are results on the issues that really matter to this community, and that's what I can bring to the table. I have a track record of bringing people together to make positive things happen in government, in the private sector, and in the community. Together, we can renew the bonds between this community and its elected leadership. Rebuilding that trust is possible, but it won't be easy. Getting there requires strong leadership and a clear vision. Here are three steps I intend to take to begin this journey. One, restore civility and openness to the Multnomah County Commission. Government must conduct itself in a way that inspires trust. Two, ensure accountability and efficiency in government programs, so that people know their tax dollars are being spent well. Here, I'd look to models that work, like the Children's Investment Fund and sun schools. Three, make strategic investments that make a real difference in the challenges facing our community, such as providing access to health care for all children in this community through the county's efficient, successful, school-based health clinics. Taken together, these steps represent a roadmap to renewal in the relationship between this community and its elected leadership. I look forward to taking that journey together. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Mr. Frederick?
Well, thank you again. When my son was in the fourth grade, I overheard a group of youngsters choosing teams for a competition. One team chose a name from the sports world, another chose to be the Crips. I decided to talk to them about that. It was clear that they chose that name because they looked up to gang members as role models. Soon after that, I started a program for Irvington fifth graders in my home. Every Wednesday for five years, I had a group over for popcorn and conversation with an adult, just to talk about adult life. Each group met four times, from florists to restaurant owners, to politicians, to astronauts, to a number of people in this room right now. Adults just talked, and they fielded questions about their lives, their work, and their hobbies. Eighteen years later, I still hear from some of those kids, who of course aren't kids anymore, as well as from some of those adults. A surprising number traced choices they made to that contact, that opportunity to picture themselves in the range of possibilities ahead of them. The kids and the adults learned from each other. And that's what happens. When I see a problem, see a better way, and then do something about it. For example, we know that we spend too much on jails, but why? Is it because of overtime? That's just too easy. Clearly, there are also some problems with how Multnomah County charges for housing inmates from other jurisdictions. Now, I toured the Inverness Jail recently, and I told you before, 80%, that's 80% of the inmates are burdened with addiction or mental illness. Now, they're in jail because they committed crimes. The question is, why are they committing crimes? You know, and I know, that we simply can't punish these people into following the straight and narrow. If we want fewer crimes, meaning a safer community, then we have to reinvest in effective treatment. And in some parts of our county, people are patrolled rather than protected. And I'm not just talking about police practices, although that's an important example. I'm also talking about maintenance, about public amenities, about taking, a sense of taking part in the community and in the economy. And I'm not just talking about Albina or Cully or Humboldt neighborhoods either, but about Hayhurst and Lentz and Park Rose and Rockwood and a number of other places. I'm in this race because I want government to work for everybody, everybody. And again, I'm not willing to accept mediocrity for this place that I fell in love with over 32 and a half years ago, when I crossed the Markham Bridge on a Greyhound bus. And we can't have excellence on the cheap. I want to thank the club, my friends in the room, and for the opportunity to speak about my candidacy. And I look forward to continuing the conversation wherever we meet. And I ask for your support. And if you live in my district, I ask for your vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. On behalf of the City Club of Portland, I want to thank our candidates for an enlightening debate and for their interest in public service. I'd also like to thank our timekeeper, Leslie Moorhead, and our panelists, Andy Linehan, David Mandell, and Don Williams. Thanks to each of you for being here today, and to our TV and radio audience for their interest in the City Club of Portland. Thank you again, and we are adjourned.